Information. This meeting is being recorded. Uh, Councilman Fareed, would you mind doing an invocation?
No problem. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity for us to come together to be of service to the community. And God, we just ask that you be in the midst of this meeting and to help guide our discussion and our decision making. God, we pray for a spirit of unity as we work together. We may have differences of opinion. God, um, but we pray that we will be able to have civil discourse. God, we just thank you for all that you have done for our great city and we thank you for all the things that you will do. And we ask you, um, to just continue to have mercy on us and continue to show us your grace. And we thank you for everything. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Uh, so see what the roll call. Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Councilman Fareed.
Yeah.
Councilman Hairston.
Yeah.
Councilman, uh, Harry.
Here.
Councilwoman Gion, I believe is absent. Councilwoman Ferguson.
Here.
Councilman Curtis is here. That is six in attendance. And one excused absence. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
A second. And Jones. Second Ferguson, Ms. Ferguson. Discussion?
Yes, Council President.
Councilman Harry.
Yes, I, I'm gonna take exception to this meeting because again, as I had, uh, mentioned in the email. This is supposed to be a public hearing. A public hearing for the citizens to come out and speak out on the legislation that's on the agenda that we're gonna vote on. Not a special regular meeting. Section three oh eight of our charter requires a public hearing for all legislation. Looking at the, uh, going to, uh, Maryland Municipal League's, uh, website, they described the, uh, meetings and what type of meetings there are. And how the state of Maryland describes them, a special meeting or a public hearing as a meeting where we get testimony from the citizens. Citizens, uh, uh, as mentioned earlier, citizens come to this meeting thinking they're gonna be, uh, being able to speak on, uh, legislation, not everything else that's involved with it. So I just, I do, I do take exception to this because I don't, I think it's misleading to the citizens. They're used to us having, uh, this meeting on third Tuesday and ha- having here Kevin and us come on and them being able to come on and give their testimony on legislation. That's being brought before them. I don't even know if they even have the legislation that we even wanna speak on tonight. So, I mean, I just wanted to make that point. I, I, I think that we're doing a disservice to the citizens when we sit here and, and juggle these meetings around. This meeting has stuff on here that really should be at a work session. Again, and that takes away from the citizens' time to comment on, on, on things on the agenda. Um, there's, that they're supposed to be commenting, you know, commenting on. Like I said, the presentations, I have no problem with those. I mean, I, I have a problem with them coming, but the people are here. So there's no reason why we can't go ahead and give them. But this discussion item on here, that is a work session item. And that is just something that we can discuss at the work session. I mean, uh, when we have our next work session or if they wanna call it a special work session. So that's just my, my feelings on this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harry, for your comments. Uh, as I responded to your email. Uh, the two presentations here are in direct response to, uh, questions that our, uh, citizens had. And it's our responsibility to follow up, uh, if a citizen has a question and we can adequately answer it. Um, that we provide the individuals that can answer those questions. And then our citizens have opportunity to, uh, ask those questions of our presenters today. Uh, so th- those are the reasons why, uh, we have the two presentations because it directly relates to questions asked by our citizens. As for public hearing, we can talk about it, um, in future meetings, but, um, our charter doesn't, um, doesn't designate, uh, public hearing in our charter, which right or wrong, right or wrong, not saying that's right or wrong, but we can talk about adding it. I have no problem, uh, discussing that and add it as, and designated it as a public hearing in the future. Uh, but in, in the spirit of a public hearing, we do give our citizens an opportunity to speak, which they were able to do last week, uh, on any legislation and give public testimony. As again, they will have the opportunity to do tonight and at more length because the agenda is really, really short. Um, but, you know, um, so I appreciate your comments. If we cannot get to, um, things in a timely manner, uh, then we can nix the discussion topics. Because I, I, you know, they're not that important because the, um, the, uh, what we were gonna talk about, the, the administration has the authority to do anyway. I was just making a council aware of what was happening. But, um, but if we don't have time to get to that, then that's fine. But the introduction for the resolution of the clerk and the discussion items should take all of five minutes. Uh, so with that, uh, we will move straight into the presentations. I'm sorry, we did not vote on the agenda. Um, is there any other discussion on the agenda before we vote? Any concerns? Okay, so we will vote on the agenda. Uh, Councilwoman Jones.
To accept the agenda, yes.
Yes. Councilman Fareed.
Yes.
Councilman Hairston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilman Harry.
No.
Councilman Curtis, yes, the agenda has been adopted. All right, well, um, at the last meeting, we had two questions from our citizens. Uh, we'll start with, uh, the question that we received from, uh, our citizen. Alita, Ms. Alita Hunter, as relates to, uh, congregation at the, uh, parks within Glen Arden, which are, um, policed by park police. Mayor Cross has reached out to park police, uh, and I believe we have a representative on here. Mayor Cross, if you can introduce and, um, we can proceed with the presentation.
Yes, yes. Thank you so much, Council President, and thank you, Council, uh, all members, citizens. Uh, this is in re- reference to the question. I am actually sitting, um, in the home of Daniels. McDaniel's, so manuals, I'm in the manuals home, so forgive my mask, I'll try and speak, uh, louder. Uh, but, uh, we do have Lieutenant Walters, W A T E R S, Waters. He is on the line from PG, uh, Parks Police, Prince George's Park Police. Lieutenant Waters.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we got you loud and clear. On you.
Okay, that's, that's great. I'm happy to be with the Glen Arden Council tonight and I, the Manuel's family, I believe.
Yes, thank you.
So, uh, do you have, um, do you have a preliminary question for me or would you just like me to proceed on the information that I have?
Uh, proceed on the information you have, Lieutenant Waters, thank you.
Okay, so, um, I focused, um, my, my, my quick research for the meeting on the Glen Arden Community Center. And, um, I discovered that over the course of a year, um, there's been about six hundred examples or instances of police activity. Uh, now, the majority, I'm, I'm happy to report of those instances of police activity, um, were property checks. Um, officers driving through, uh, that, that, uh, that park complex to make sure everything was in good order. But about six percent of those six hundred instances of police activity were other calls. And so just to go down the list of the specific things that officers handled, they addressed, uh, eight park rules violations over the course of that year. Uh, nine instances of, um, alarm activity at the buildings. Um, six suspicious, uh, situations, one traffic stop. Uh, they assisted, uh, Glen Arden and/or Prince George's County Police Department five different times. That's not a surprise to me because we worked seamlessly with Glen Arden on a number of, of mutual concerns. There was one larceny case, one sexual offense case, one, or two cases of found or recovered property. Uh, one CDS or drug possession case, one vandalism case, uh, one community engagement, according to my research. But I believe that there's been more of that and, uh, one automobile collision. Um, going beyond the year, I think the council knows that we experienced a couple of homicides related to park property. I just wanted to, to acknowledge that, although my research went back only one year because I feel that it's important to, to sort of have a contemporary or contemporaneous snapshot of what's been going on at the park. But that's my brief overview. If there are any questions that you all might have.
Thank you, uh, Lieutenant. Uh, uh, one question we did have is, uh, if we do, um, witness any suspicious activity there. Uh, what's the contact information we should, um, use to report it?
Well, hold on for one, I just wanna put you on, on hold. Uh, the, the, the important, probably the most important thing to remember is if it's an emergency, you can dial nine one one. And that call will get to us. If it's any other sort of call, it could be an automobile collision, a park rules violation, suspicious activity, something like this. You could dial three zero one four five nine thirty two thirty two, and I'm gonna repeat that number. Um, three zero one four five nine three two three two. So those are the two main ways in which to reach, uh, the Maryland National Capital Park Police.
Thank you. Uh, at this point, I would like to open up to any questions and I saw Councilwoman Jones hand and then Mayor Carter, I will come to you.
My question, sir, is when, uh, when is your, do you all have a certain, do you come to this, the, the rec center at a certain time? I mean, when do you come through and just like, uh, I, I mean, when is your presence? I mean, I wouldn't want you to get, I mean, I don't expect the police to come through at the certain time, same time, every day, every, you know. What I'm saying, do you, I, I, we, we don't see the park police that often there? And if that's your jurisdiction?
Right. Right, fair question. Now, if we invoke a special area check, um, of that park or other parks in Glen Arden. Uh, for instance, if a citizen has concern about, um, maybe a park's rules violation happening every day at the end of school, let's say at five o'clock. Um, it, in those instances, you might expect to see officers drive through the park, um, at the same time every evening or during the day. Uh, but outside of invoking a special area check like that, um, it's hard to say when an officer is gonna be driving through. We, of course, offer twenty-four hour police service and so officers can check those parks on their own volition. Um, we, of course, have great communication with the staff in the building and that's really key. And the staff is very good about communicating its concerns about what's going on, not only inside those centers, but outside those centers and letting us know about it. But outside of that, it's really up to the officers to drive through whenever they want. Now, uh, I gave you the number of six hundred examples of police activity there within this past year. September to September. Um, but that doesn't account for the times that the officers have driven through and done their own checks without calling out or reporting it through their computers or registering that check with the on-duty dispatcher. So, uh, I, I would reckon that the number of park checks conducted by our agency is much higher. Um, and so, and many of these checks, of course, are done at nighttime because park rule says that you're not supposed to be on park property at nighttime. So many citizens probably aren't gonna see, uh, our cars, um, at nighttime, you know, because, because it's nighttime. And there are also, um, occasions where command staff might be checking the park. Um, I'm a patrol lieutenant, I do check parks, but I'm in an unmarked vehicle. It's hard to tell that I'm an officer if you just look at my truck.
Okay, so, uh, unfortunately, I think the citizen that ca- that, that had this concern, her son, I think, uh, plays football at the park. And they do have night games, uh, and she, uh, also indicated, uh, it sounds like during practice, that she was seeing, uh, uh, drug transactions and alcohol drinking. So when the children are on, uh, at the, uh, park, uh, at practice, uh, shouldn't police presence, or as you call it, an area check should be made? That's the new terminology for me.
Well, now, in, so if, if we're, if we've, um, we understand that there might be some park rules violations going on during that practice, then yes, we should, we should check that. And it could be, you know, it could be very effective for me to pass this on to a patrol sergeant and officer and ask them to show up at that practice. And, and try to, try to address any, any violations that they see. And in many cases, that's enough to fix the problem. If we need a more consistent check over time, then we can certainly do that too. Uh, what time, um, by the way, do, do these football practices happen?
Um, I think, okay, my son played football for them like thirty years ago, so who was like after school? But now, I don't know, uh, let's see, uh, there's one, uh, Jesse Huff Junior. Uh, can you answer that question for, um, the officer? Do you know what time practices start now? Are they at six in the evening or five in the evening until dusk?
It's from six P M. to eight P M.
Okay, it's from six P M. to eight P M., sir.
Okay, six P M. to eight P M. Okay, so that's great. So that's, um, that's a good piece of information and that's something that I can pass on to our patrol folks. Thanks for that.
You're welcome. That was my question.
Thank you. Mayor Carter?
Yes, thank you. Oh, it seems to me that, that half answered my question. But, uh, I thought the citizen was more concerned with Saturday, um, games. Are, is there no officer assigned to the different parks or the different fields when there are, um, uh, football games, um, at, at, at a facility? Uh, or does your staff, um, notify the, um, police when they notify the police when they're going to have, um, a football game at the, um, the facility? Because it seemed to me that's when she, with, with the citizen that, that talked about it, that's what she was concerned about. Um, the Saturday games, uh, they go on all day. And, and very often, the, the parents become a little, uh, excited, uh, when their children are playing. And they're drinking and smoking and, and it's, and there's no police presence. Is there no assignment to a, a facility when there's that kind of activity going on?
Well, there hasn't been, it seems to me, an assignment at, at the fields at Glen Arden, but that doesn't mean there can't be. Um, you know, we have lots and lots of athletic activity on our fields throughout the county, um, on any given weekend. But especially during the football season. And, um, in many cases, um, the, 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 these fields and the community and the athletic program that centered around a specific space. In, in, in most cases, these organizations are very self-policing, right? So, uh, they, they, they know the rules and regulations, they know what's expected. And they do a very good job at keeping their organization and spectators and everybody in check. But we do have some hotspots that we need to check and we have a list of them. And I know where they are right off the top of my head. Glen Arden hasn't been added to that list, um, probably in part because we didn't know about it. But I can certainly add that to our list and make sure that we pay attention, add that to our field list to be watched on weekends. And that's not a problem at all.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Okay, well, that's great information, so we'll, we'll, right, so we'll concentrate on the Saturday games in addition to the practices. And, and then, you know, hopefully, with, with, like, some, some visits or whatever and some understanding and reciprocity. Uh, w- we'll all be on the same page about what's expected of us on the fields. And then we can hopefully move on and, and the football season will be, will be a success without complaint.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Fareed.
Um, thank you for your presentation. I would like to know if it's possible to get a list of the parks in Glen Arden that are within your jurisdiction. Um, I'm not exactly sure what constitutes a park, if it's just one of the facilities related to PG Parks. Or if it would also be any, um, spaces that are designated as parks by the city of Glen Arden.
Sure, absolutely. I can follow up with you on that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Jones.
Uh, one more question, sir. Uh, Ardmore Park is also within our sphere. I, um, if I'm not mistaken, I think the, uh, we use that, um, facility also for football games and soccer games. Um, right, on Ardmore, Ardwick Road, I'm sorry, Ardwick, Ardmore Road.
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay, so tha- that's another park that, um, that is, yeah, used by the, um, I believe the Glen Arden, um, Ardmore Boys and Girls Club.
That's a, that's a very popular park, well-used park, alone with the recreation center, I'm very familiar with it.
Uh-huh, okay. So do you have issues there?
Yeah, we have incidental issues at that park, but I can't recall off the top of my head whether we've had situations involving the athletics that have been taking place there.
Okay.
Um, you know, during any given football setting, parking always seems to be, um, an issue. Uh, because, you know, many of our parks, um, were, you know, you know, instructed a long time ago. And, um, we just have a lot more people, a lot more cars nowadays. And so sometimes parking can be a critical issue. Um, but I'm not remembering anything recently about the, the, the athletic programming there being a problem.
Okay.
But we can, we can keep an eye on that too on Saturdays and evenings when there are practices. And I've seen practices there myself, but on those occasions, I haven't seen anything wrong.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, are there any other questions that I didn't see? No. Well, Lieutenant, thank you very much for coming on and joining our meeting to answer, uh, the questions of our citizens. We appreciate the job that you do and all that your officers do, uh, and, uh, we look forward to, uh, you following up with, uh, with us as relates to the parks that are u- under your jurisdiction.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you for the kind words. And again, it was great to join the council tonight. And, um, hopefully next time, uh, y- y- you'll be able to see my face, uh, with a better computer. I don't know if that's a good thing for you all or a bad. But, uh, but I'll be able to join you in a better way. Uh, but in, in, until then, um, uh, have a, have a safe time in our parks.
Thank you, sir. You be safe as well as your officers.
Thank you, sir. Take care. Bye-bye.
You too, bye.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda relates to a question, uh, proposed, uh, by, um, Ms. Smallwood as relates to, um, uh, traffic relating to schools dropping off and picking up of, um, children from their schools. Uh, and to touch on that and maybe a little bit more is, uh, Glen Arden's very own, uh, school board member Shayla Adams Stafford. And forgive me, uh, Ms. Adams Stafford for leaving off the Stafford on the agenda, but, uh, you know, my apologies for that. But, uh, uh, you have the floor to talk about the, um, the traffic setup. As I, I know all of us in PG County, if we have children in schools, are dealing with, uh, and, um, before yours.
All right, uh, and I do apologize, my daughter, as soon as I hit the unmute button, decided to start doing a musical selection with her dinner instruments, uh, her forks, so I apologize. Um, so thank you so much for having me here this evening with you all. And I wanna just preface this by saying, you know, my role as your representative on the Board of Education is really to, uh, provide oversight and create and, and oversee policy, um, as it relates to the school system. So when it comes to day-to-day operations, you know, I am not the person making those decisions. However, uh, if you have concerns about specific operations that are happening, please email me. And I will get the answers for you. I will, um, go directly to Dr. Goldson on your behalf and try to find out the answers to those questions. Um, could you tell me specifically the question that, uh, you're referencing that was asked around the bus traffic?
Um, Ms. Smallwood, you're on the line, uh, if you wanna repeat your question?
Yes.
Ms. Smallwood, you're on mute if you're talking.
So I can, I can talk a little bit about, um,
I can, uh, this is Mayor Cross. Thank you again, um, from the mighty District Four. We appreciate you, board member. Uh, so the question was relative to the amount of traffic, uh, when school lets out, the children are standing everywhere. And cars and parents are wrapping around. Looks like, uh, Councilwoman Smallwood, are you coming in now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So she's ready to receive your question, ma'am.
Okay.
My, my concern was, I was leaving from my house to go to my mother's house, which is normally less than a minute. It took me ten minutes to come from my house to my mother's house because the traffic from, uh, Glen Arden Woods Elementary School was backed up. Single file from the school all the way down to the bottom of, uh, Fifth Avenue.
You said Fifth Avenue?
Fifth.
Fifth, five, sorry.
Fifth, I S K E.
Fisk, okay, thank you, sorry. I'm just making sure I'm taking this down adequately. So what I will say is I'm gonna take that concern to Dr. Goldson, just to find out sort of what's happening there. Maybe I can even drive to sort of see what the situation for myself. But I will say, one of the reasons why I might be experiencing more traffic around schools is because Dr. Goldson has asked families to carpool. Um, and we know why, because we are experiencing challenges with our busing transportation, as many school districts are across the nation, um, in which there are shortage of bus drivers. And so the request has been for parents to carpool. So as, you know, compared to years prior, where you may not have seen as many parents dropping students off. Uh, that, that could be why you're seeing an increase in traffic. Um, so that, that's one possible explanation there as to why that could be happening. Um, additionally, I'll say, um, yes, I'm just, I'm just wondering if there were, um, other questions around specifically the traffic. Um, but I, I can talk also, I believe, I'm so sorry. Um, my daughter, she's singing so loud, sorry if you can hear that. I, I know there were some other questions around the before and after school program.
Well, I have another question for you.
Go ahead.
My other question is for you, uh, what are y'all gonna do about getting the kids in Glen Arden coming back to their school? The kids in Glen Arden have to walk past that school to go to another school. And, uh, I think you need to have a meeting so the kids in Glen Arden can go back to the school in the neighborhood. I think this is ridiculous, you're having kids walking past the school, going to a school.
Okay, which school, which, which? Okay, which school, which, which school are you referencing? I'm trying to, I'm taking notes as you're talking. Which school are you referencing?
I referenced Glen Arden Woods Elementary School. That school used to be a comprehensive school and a tag school. Now it's strictly a tag.
All tag, yeah.
And then bussing the kids out of Glen Arden and bussing kids into Glen Arden, which I think is ridiculous. The kids should not have to walk past the school in their community so people from outside of the community can come in and go to the school.
Yeah, no, I, I definitely can raise that with Dr. Goldson. I know that, uh, a large, um, a large reason, uh, well, something to consider is that at this time, we're undergoing a redistricting process. And so, uh, Dr. Goldson and her team are considering, you know, which schools are under-enrolled and which schools are over-enrolled. They're also looking at census data to determine where boundary lines need to be drawn in order to ensure that students are going to their neighborhood schools and they have, you know, less than a two-mile distance or walk to travel to school. Um, so what I'll say is that I think that it's definitely a challenge, but you can get involved in the redistricting process.
Ms., Ms. Adams Stafford, you are mute now.
Oh, sorry about that. Let me, um, I'm gonna drop in the chat here the redistricting link. This is for the School Boundary Initiative. This is for the School Boundary Initiative. So if you click on that link that I just dropped in the chat, and this is off of the Uh, I'm sorry. Uh, so this School Boundary Initiative here, um, you can do here is you can actually look at the interactive map and you can see the different plans for redistricting and how they'll affect your child's commute to school. And I think it's a great way for folks to be able to see the hypothetical situations. Also had some opportunities for community members to give input into the boundary lines. So there, there should be some more opportunities coming up for that, but I can definitely check on it as well. Uh, they also have on here a report summary of the draft boundary scenario. So I would encourage folks to check that out as well. And I see some other hands up as well.
Yes, yes, thank you. Um, Ms. Lolita Green?
Okay, Lolita Green, ex, um, ex, uh, PG County Special Education teacher.
All right, I'm a former teacher too.
Yes, ex-retired. What I see, I'm on the corner of Piedmont Church. Then you got churches going towards Savania Woods. Then you got, go down Piedmont Avenue, make a right on Johnson, that's then our Parkway. You've got Glen Arden Woods, which is an excellent teacher. I could toot my horn with my ex BSU. Person that used to be the principal there, okay? But what I don't understand is you got two schools right there in the community. So why does, um, my concern also, to piggyback on, um, Councilwoman Smallwood, why were you sending children out of community when you could walk right down Church Street and you at Savania Woods in five minutes? And then you got Glen Arden Woods, you could get there in ten minutes. So why are you bussing students out of the community out when they could, is, 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 is both of them in five to ten walking distance? I mean, as long as I've been here, I never seen kids being bussed out of Glen Arden. They went to, they only had Glen Arden Woods. Now they got Savania, where they got two choices. So why are they being bussed out? That's my concern. I, I, I think is, I mean, I mean, they could walk to school, five minutes one way, ten minutes the other way. And I see, I mean, I see, I, I see less this year because I'm looking out the window. Going down, and I can't say what I see going up Glen Arden Parkway. But it's a new school, so you got two new, you got two schools now.
Well, one thing I'll say is that, you know, I think that with Glen Arden Woods being a specialty school, I think one just general question that I have for the school system is, thank you so much, how can we take all of the, how can we take the, I got it, thank you. How can we take all of the instructional models that are being used at specialty schools and tag schools? How can we allow those to, those programs to exist in all schools, right? Instead of being concentrated in one specific school? Because I truly believe that all students should have access to the tag instructional models that are being used. Every student can benefit from those. And so that's sort of my question about some of the tag programs. Or how can we make it so that every student has that access and that opportunity? Um, not just students that specifically go into that program. Um, so I definitely will take that back. Um, you know, I, I just, it's crucial that, you know, we create those opportunities for every student. Um, but I do hear both you and Ms. Smallwood's concerns for sure. So I did write those down. And you said Piedmont and Church?
You got Piedmont Avenue and Church. Then you got James Fletcher Way. You make a left off of James Fletcher Way, Meach Church. Savania Woods is down, you go down Church Street, that's Savania Woods. Okay, then you got Glen Arden Parkway, that's Glen Arden, um, Elementary. So that mean, uh, it's easier for parents to walk straight down Church Street and get to Savania Woods. They're having to do it and bust out. And it's easier for them to walk up Glen Arden Parkway to get to Glen Arden Woods. But I mean, I could do it, and I know it's easy for them to do it, and they're much younger than me and the parents are much younger. And it's easy, I think it's more, gotta commute your children to stay in their own community instead of being bussed out. I've never seen that happen in Glen Arden. All the children went to Glen Arden Woods, walk. And then it went to Savania Woods. So the buses coming in, taking them out, I don't understand that.
I'm gonna definitely.
And I had a, and I had a parent stop at the stop sign, which is a good thing. She stopped at the stop sign. That mean, it was fast through the joy, her and her son, which is a safe thing. Because the, the parent might have been sick or might have been delaying work or whatever. She had five students, she could be at the stop sign, walk down to Savania Woods. So what would happen is those five students get bussed out. I mean, I mean, they could get home in five minutes, they're right, or they're right on Piedmont, they're on Pope. I mean, they're on Johnson, they're on Glen Arden Parkway. So that's my point. Why bust them out when they can get to school with the parent, you know? And the parent could get to school faster in case of emergency or anything.
And I think it does have to do with the tag, the tag pro, the specialty program. And I think my, my thought is, you know, how can we ensure that those types of programs are in all schools? So that they're not concentrated in one schools and push other students into other neighborhood schools that are already overcrowded. Um, so those would be some of my thoughts there that I can share with Dr. Goldson for sure. I know I saw at least three more hands up.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Uh, I want to call on Ms. Linda Malden. I saw your hand up and then it went down, then went up again. Did you want to retract your question? Do you have a question?
I, I, I do have a question. Uh, my question, um, I'm concerned. I don't have, um, school-aged children in, in Ward One in Glen Arden Woods Elementary School. But I did go to Glen Arden Woods Elementary School, and now it is a blue ribbon school. It is run, it has won awards for the academics and, and the children that's come out of that school. And they've done very well. And my problem, my question has been, and I agree with, um, Councilwoman, former Councilwoman Smallwood and, um, Ms. Green who spoke before me. Um, why is redistricting an issue with the children that live in Ward One? When I was in Ward One years and years and years ago, when we walked to the school and children that live in Ward One can walk to the school, Glen Arden Woods Elementary School. And now that it's awarded a blue ribbon as a magnet school and has won awards. Why is it that these children in this neighborhood cannot walk to school like we used to do back in the day? And are bussed out? So the children are coming from other communities are bussed in. Based on, I don't know what the criteria is, but I think that children in our neighborhood, they can walk to the school. Why is it that we're talking about redistricting these kids outside of their neighborhoods where they live? To get top, the best education that they can get that we got when I was coming up? What is the problem? Why is this an issue?
I am the chair of the Academic Achievement Committee. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Malden.
And I don't have children going to school at the time, but I have a problem with that. Why is that an issue?
One thing I'll say, uh, is I think that, um, in terms of, you know, the concept of having tag schools, I, I'm on the, I'm the chair of the Academic Achievement Committee. And I plan to look at that this year to look at equitable access to the tag program. Because truly the strategies that are being used in the tag school, that's what I'm really pushing to be used in all schools. So there wouldn't be a need for there to be a magnet. Um, those should be, every child can benefit from the project-based learning that's happening at Glen Arden Woods. That's what I taught, that's how I taught for a decade when I was a public school teacher. And so it's not just for gifted students. Those types of strategies should be used for every child, no matter their reading level. Um, and so I definitely am, since, you know, several people have brought this up, you know, I think that is something that I put on my, um, my, my sort of, uh, plan for the year to look at, um, our specialty programs. I can't remember exactly which month we're gonna dive deep into that, but these will be some of the things that I raise and suggestions that I bring back to them for sure. And I know I saw a couple.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Free?
Yes, uh, thank you, Ms. Adams Stafford, for coming to our meeting. Um, I do think that redistricting has a, a big part in this. Um, and I know that we'll be doing a, a session on September thirtieth, um, to talk about the redistricting and how it impacts the citizens in Glen Arden. Um, I think outside of the fact that, you know, there's a tag school and that's now been concentrated to only allow tag students, which has displaced some students. What we need to be looking at, um, hopefully the, uh, school board will be looking at is when, uh, communities are, are developed, um, you know, new housing, that adds people to the population. And what I haven't seen is that Glen Arden has increased schools, right? There's been three schools in the city of Glen Arden, and now one of them is sort of repurposed. So there really are only two dedicated schools.
Yeah.
And, and in Ward Three for the new Woodmore Town Center, um, at Glen Arden Development, those students go to Kingsford Elementary School, which is it very far, um, from the community. And so, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that the plans for redistricting look to reallocate the resources. So that one, it, it shouldn't matter whether they go to Ardmore Elementary or Kingsford, that they'll still get the same quality of education, but that children aren't forced to, you know, go so far away. But I think, again, the issue is even if we had all the children go to the schools in Glen Arden, is there enough space for all of the children in Glen Arden at those three schools? Um, so I think, you know, there's a lot of different issues and concerns. So I'm glad that you're here. I'm glad that, you know, this conversation will continue, um, and I appreciate you.
Yes, no, I, one of the things that I'm really concerned about and that I plan to raise, uh, is that I really do think that we need some type of, um, moratorium on development as it relates to, uh, the pace at which we're building schools. You know, every five minutes I turn around, there's an entirely new development. And then every day I'm getting emails from parents that are saying, "Our school is bursting at the seams and overcrowded. Please stop development here." Now, I, I don't control development. I don't, you know, I have no control over that. But I'm going to advocate that we institute what they have in other counties, really a moratorium until number one, more affordable housing is built. And number two, until they have strategized where those children will go to school. We can't just keep building and building and building, um, without any clear plan as to how this impacts families and students. It has a major impact on students and families. Um, and so that's something that I'm, I'm hopefully going to be advocating for. Um, so, uh, I, I'll need support on that. Uh, but that development has an uneven development. That's really what I view as the issue. Um, and we see the effects of that all over the county. It's, it's definitely a county-wide issue.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Price?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Stafford, I, I support you one hundred percent with that. Um, I thank you for even addressing that issue. Affordable housing is a very, very important key to some of this. Um, okay, so I have two, two points or two concerns. One, um, the issue with the, the schools directly affect me and my household. Um, my son did go to Judge Savania Woods. Actually, he's supposed to be there net, um, enrolled in there now. However, because of the disparity of the school, the condition of Judge Savania Woods as far as the learning component, component of it, I just could not afford to keep my child after four years any longer in that school. And I, I presented, I, I'm a transparent, I mean, I'm a transportee from another county, Charles County. Um, I arrived, my son was above where he should have been on the spectrum. I mean, he was above average, but being in Judge Savania Woods, he continually fell behind in the first year. Um, at the end of school year, he just dropped off. And he continued to drop all four years. And it was no part, I mean, the special ed people were doing the best that they could and they were excellent. However, when I called other schools to figure out, okay, what can we do? Because I brought it up to the principal, the assistant principal, about the grades. And, um, I've attended all the, um, tea, the morning teas and joined the PTA. I did everything that I thought I could do as a parent. I even brought up, okay, we have an after-school program for the magnet kids, but we don't have anything for the, the, the kids that are behind. It's a Title I school. Why don't we have a program after school to get these kids, uh, supar? They have a Spanish after school. So I suggested, well, why don't my child go to the Spanish and learn with, with them? I was told he cannot because it's especially, the money comes out of a special pot. Now, I mean, I, I brought it up, all the questions, all the concerns. I'm not one who will sit back and wait for something ha- to happen. Um, I took it upon myself to start calling other schools. Tell me what the curriculum is. I, um, Glen Arden Woods was one of those schools that I called. And I was flabbergasted at the difference of how the curriculum was and how they taught. And just the freedom, the music and, and all these programs that they had, that Judge Savania Woods did not have. And I, and I brought that up to the person I spoke to. Why can't my son come here then? Because I do live in Glen Arden. And I, I, I mean, because it was a tag school. Now, just because you're a tag school does not mean, and I, when I called the school board, because that was important, let me call the school board and see. And I was told, well, all education, all press charges has to do is give the standard amount of education. Well, when I'm dealing with my child, that is not good enough. You just giving me the bare minimums is not good enough when this school is less than a mile away. And they are, are far above what any of the other schools are in terms of education. And I literally took my child because at this point, it wasn't just about his education, it was a safety issue there. Um, he was getting abused and nobody was doing anything. So I had to literally start, I got a special transfer to take him to Woodmore. And I had to drive him every single day. It cost me. That should not happen in my own neighborhood. Now, now we're dealing with, and I, and I brought this up and I've decided to join this meeting because there is a very, very critical situation going on in Glen Arden. Our children are at risk. It is paramount that we get involved. They're out here from my son's school now. He, he now goes to Kenmore instead of transferring him back to, um, Judge Savania, Judge Savania Woods. And I literally would have brought him out of school and did homeschool if he had to go back to that school. That's how bad it is for us. Now, we're dealing with the children that twelve years, years old right here yesterday. Were in Glen Arden by the community center smoking weed. They're, and they're not just smoking weed, it's laced with stuff. They're hanging out. They're out of control. And when you contact, like, And when you contact like our community rental offices and stuff that they don't really want a part of that. What can we do at Glen Ar- as Glen Arden to save our children? What can we do? What can we, how can we get the police involved? How can we get our whole community involved in this so that our children will have a future? So that they can be something? So I'm asking you guys to come together. I I'm willing to work with you, whatever. Hey, i- it's time, all hands in, everybody on deck.
Ms. Price, you touched on so many points. Um, and I'm gonna try to get to all of them. I tried to take some notes. Um, and in terms of the affordable housing, I just wanna say, can we give Glen Arden a pat on the back? We are nationally recognized for our amazing mixed housing. Come on now. We, that is wonderful. I don't know, you know, how much every, I'm sure everyone here knows about that program, but that mixed income housing, you know, program that we have is a national model. And so we absolutely need more affordable housing. Um, and particularly housing for to attract high-quality teachers to come and work here so they can afford to live here. Um, so in terms of uh what you were mentioning about sort of the um the quality of the special education program, as the Academic Achievement Committee Chair, one thing I committed my entire year to focusing on is special education. Um, I know that people probably don't like that, but that is the main complaint that I hear from parents is about special education. And so we're gonna go deep into special education and look at the data, figure out what's working and what is not working. Because so many families reach out about their problems with the special education program. And so I certainly want you to email me to be a part of those meetings. We want people to come, talk about their experiences, because we really need to know what is happening. Um, in in additionally, you talked about the um the 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 quality of the instructional programs. You know, again, I I just feel as though, you know, you know, advanced instructional methods really should take place in every classroom. Uh, it comes down to teacher development. It comes down so many different, you know, aspects that go into that. Um, and so I I definitely want to explore, you know, how do we allow for those types of practices to happen in all schools? Um, and so that is something that I, again, will take up with the Academic Achievement Committee, and I will send an email to Dr. Goldson just about the fact that I've heard that so many times this evening. Because I mean, you can tell the the difference in the curriculum. You can tell the difference in how students are treated um i- in in two different types, very starkly different instructional models. So I do hear you on that. And I'm a huge advocate of project-based learning. That's been my whole teaching career. Um, another point that you mentioned was about students after school. You know, one thing that uh da- um uh Mayor Cross asked me to bring to the meeting was more information about the bu- when the before and after school programs begin. I just dropped in the chat the list that's on the PGCPS website that shares when after-school programs begin. So I would like to direct you there to also share that with your neighbors and and family members about after-school programming. Um, but I think that one of the really important things that needs to happen is students really need like safe spaces to go after school with constructive activities. And so I know that our, uh, maybe someone can tell me a little bit more about what services are offered at our community center. Um, is there a teen space there? You know, I taught in DC for many years. And I know that community centers had, you know, have computers in them, safe spaces for students to do homework, basketball, act- actor t- activities, um, programs for young women, you know, a robust set of staff and programs that offer daily programming. Um, additionally, I I wanna charge, you know, where are, you know, some of our civic groups, our fraternities, our sororities? You know, I'm a member of a sorority. Uh, I know that uh my sorority has many uh many programs for young women after school that they can become involved in, but they're connected to schools. Um, but you know, I definitely will reach out to um Ms. Barbara Holt. I'll ask Dr. Goldson if she can reach out to Ms. Barbara Holt Streeter, who's in charge of those after-school programs and see, you know, do we have some mentoring programs at some of the schools in Glen Arden? That's definitely an easy thing that I can ask and bring back to you all for sure. So I don't know if I answered every question, but please email me. You can email me anytime, and I will get back to you for sure, but.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adam Stafford. Uh, and I hate.
I know we have a lot of other hands up, but I did wanna mention, I do have a meeting this Saturday, um, which is like my monthly meeting. So if people wanna ask deeper questions, I don't wanna monopolize this meeting uh with questions about the school board, but um if you send me an email, I'll send you a link to the meeting that I have every fourth Saturday at eleven AM. You can come and get your questions answered there.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Adam Stafford. Uh, and as it's one second, Miss Harry. Um, and as I've said, I hate to cut off a, you know, a great discussion, but the these are good questions. Um, uh, but as Ms. Adam Stafford said, she ha- she holds these meetings um o- often, so uh you have her information. You can ask uh questions related to school board matters to her there. Uh, also, the school board conducts uh uh meetings where you can ask these very important questions. Uh, and but we are exhausting the time that we have for 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 this topic as I want to get more to uh questions that um or concerns from citizens that regarding legislation that we have here uh in the city. Um, so if you can, write those questions down, uh, send it to Ms. Adam Stafford. She'll be happy to get back with you. Uh, Mister, I'm sorry, Councilman Harry.
Yes, I just wanted to say, um, uh, thank Ms. Adam Stafford for coming on. Um, but I would like to start a meeting with you so I can give you the history of what went on with Glen On Woods. Because I fought on that issue for a number of years. I met with school board officials, we me and a former councilman Smallwood. I mean, some of the things that they did were like a little underhanded to get that to be a tag school. Um, you know, taking two hundred and seventy-nine kids out of our school to one of the highest-performance schools and send them to one of the lowest-performance schools, I felt was a disservice to our students. You know, and then they have a tag program in Savany Woods, but they check, they bust those tag students out to another tag program and bring them back to test. So they're playing a shell game to keep those scores up. So like I said, I just really need to set up a meeting with you and give you the overall history on what they did. Cause like I said, you could fund a twenty-two million dollars into one school, but you can't give extra counselors to Savany Woods with, who has seven hundred and eighty students and only one counselor? That's a problem.
Yes.
So, yeah, so I would like to, um, like I say, reach out to you and instead of meeting with you, so I can just discuss the history of that program.
Absolutely. And and please, um, I, if if you email me, any, if anyone emails me, I'm going to take those concerns right to Dr. Goldson. And I'm gonna try to get an answer for you. Um, and I want to continue talking about this. I want you all to come to my Academic Achievement Committee meeting so we can go deep into these topics. I put on uh the chat uh a a link for you to sign up for my district for advisory committee. Once you sign up here, then you're on my mailing list. Oh, that focuses, let me make sure you all can access this. Hold on a second. This mailing list allows you to um come to my my meeting. I send you a reminder of the fourth Saturday meetings. I'm gonna also send them out to all the school listeners. So I'm gonna back back off here and just say thank you again for allowing me to come, and uh feel free to reach out to me anytime. Thank you, everybody.
And again, she's not only on the school board, she is Glen Arden's own. She lives in the city of Glen Arden, so uh, thank you uh for answering these questions. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Uh, so there's uh the next item on the agenda um is the introduction of resolution for the council clerk. Uh, this is just the introduction. There isn't going to be a, you know, a discussion on it. Uh, but in keeping a proper protocol in order to um vote on it at our next meeting, we have to introduce it at this meeting. So I I will share my screen. Let's make sure I have it up first. Share screen. Screen three. Share. All right, Ms. uh Jones, can you see the screen? Do you see the?
Yes, I can. Yes, I do.
Okay, all right. Um, this resolution uh is introduced by me, Council President. Uh, it's currently no co-sponsors uh at this special regular session on uh September the twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Resolution authorizing the appointment of Victoria Lewis as council clerk to the city council. Whereas pursuant to section nine oh two of the city charter, the council president has determined that it is appropriate to provide personnel to perform duties of the council clerk to the council on behalf of the legislative office. And whereas indicated in section nine oh two, the clerk to the council shall be appointed by the president of the council with approval of the majority of the council and who shall serve at the pleasure of the council. And whereas the council has determined that the appointment of Victoria Lewis as the permanent clerk to the council should be approved. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of Glen Arden sitting in the regular session this day uh as follows. Uh, that the city council be and is hereby authorized to provide personnel to perform duties of the clerk to the council for the legislative office to that Victoria Lewis be and she is hereby appointed as a clerk to the council and is authorized to undertake all those powers and duties as set out in section nine oh two of the charter. Then three, that this resolution shall so take effect immediately. Uh, and there's one more resolution as it will require us to to uh buy out Ms. Lewis from her contract at her current place of employment, uh, which is another resolution in itself sponsored by their curse of second council president is regular special record session um date of, uh, or at the rec session next week. Uh, the date of introduction is today, Tuesday, September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. A resolution for the purpose of filling the position of council clerk with a permanent employee, including the payment of the conversion fee to the entity retained to locate the qualified candidate. Whereas the city of Glen Arden, here in the city, is a municipal corporation of the state of Maryland, operated on article eleven E of the Constitution of Maryland and four dash three oh one of the local government article of the Annotated Code of Maryland as amended. And whereas pursuant to the local government article of the Maryland Code five dash two oh two, the mayor and council of the city of Glen Arden, Maryland, here in the council, is expressly empowered to undertake actions, among other things, necessary to one, ensure good government of the municipality and whereas section nine oh two of the city charter provides that there shall be a clerk to the council who shall be appointed by the president of the council with approval of the majority of the council and who shall serve at the pleasure of the council. And whereas it is the sense of the council that Victoria Lewis is qualified to be hired for the position of clerk of the council on a permanent basis, subject to a reservation of all rights rel- related to the employment relationship of the city and the ploy and the employee as presently exists or may exist in the future. And whereas the firm Robert Half was retained to assist in identifying temporary services with the understanding that should that individual become a regular employee, that the city will be obligated, I'm I'm sorry, obliged to reimburse Robert Half an amount equal to eighty percent of Victoria's Lewis salary in currently earning, is currently earning. And whereas it is the sense to council that expenditure in the form of the obligation to Robert Half is justified in this instance. Being now resolved, the council approves the appointment of Victoria Lewis as clerk to the council and that the council approves the necessary expenditures of payment to Robert Half of the conversion fee in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars. Uh, be it further resolved and ordained by the council, by the city council of Glen Arden, Maryland, that requirements of of charter section three oh eight B for the introduction and adoption of resolutions haven't been satisfied. This resolution is hereby enacted this day of when we vote on it uh in the future. Uh, these are the two introductions of uh this resolution. Um, and the council actually be going for it uh in a closed meeting tomorrow to further interview Ms. Lewis. Uh, and then we'll vote. Uh, citizens at this meeting can ask any questions of uh legislation uh that this council is undertaking um at the time of the citizens' comments. Any questions from the council?
Uh, yes, Council President.
Councilman Harry.
Yeah, question on this resolution. Um, line thirty-seven, where it says the firm, whereas the firm Robert Half was retained to assist in identifying temporary services with the understanding that the individual will become a regular employee. When did the council retain the services of Robert Half to find a city clerk? I mean, find a council clerk?
She was uh retained as the um executive assistant to the mayor once uh the former executive left. Uh, and she has done a phenomenal job there uh where her skills and talents were um were noticed by me and uh other council members. And we thought that we could offer Ms. Lewis the job as a council clerk uh because those skills are transferable.
Okay, I'm just saying, though, but we did not retain Robert Half to do that. She happened to be retained by the executive office, and we just noticed a skill level that would work in the council's office. I think that line is misleading because we did not contract with Robert Half to find us uh council clerk.
Uh, the city retained her, so we're all one.
Okay, no, you're saying that Robert Half was retained.
By the city.
No, it says Robert Haswell's retained to provide temporary services with the understanding that she would, that that individual will become a regular employee, and that is not what happened. I'm I that, my thing is this, it is, it is, my thing is, if we wanna put the legislation out there, let's put the legislation out there as it should be. The council did not did not um retain Robert Half to search for anybody for us. That, she was retained by the executives by the administration to fill the executive assistant position. And we just happened to see she had qualities for the council clerk. I just think that it needs to be uh, uh, if you're gonna do a piece of resi- a piece of registration that's gonna be signed off on by everybody, it should state what actually happened, not what we think happened. Um, that's not what happened. I'm, I think that line needs to come out of there, and I'm not understanding what it, what's the issue with taking that out there? Taking that line out.
That's fine, and yeah.
Can I, can I, can I make a, can I make a comment?
No, you cannot, uh, Ms. Maxine, not at this moment. When we, when I open it up for citizens, then you can ask your your question.
Okay, cause this is very important to that legislation, but I'll, I'll.
Thank you. Well, I'll I'll hear your question. Um.
It's not a question.
Or or co- or comment, yes. Thank you. Uh, Councilman McFrey.
Yes, I agree with Councilman Herring that the language needs to be a bit more precise around um around that particular piece. We did not actually retain Robert Half for that, for her, but I know, I understand what you're trying to convey with that, but it's not as um precise as it could be with the language, so.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Okay. That is it for this part of the agenda. Uh, and Councilman.
Wait a minute, do I get to make a comment on that?
Uh, Ms. Ms. Maxine, yes, once I open uh the the floor for um for this, this comment, then you can ask your question. I'll actually go to you first, okay?
Okay.
All right. And uh, Mr. Herring, keeping in context of us tabling the discussion, uh, we can Ms. Maxine, move right in into the uh uh citizens' comments.
Okay. Hi, good afternoon, everyone. This is Maxine Pfeiffer. I am a former president of the city council. When I was the president of the city council, we retained Robert Half to get us a temporary council clerk. We used the council clerk, Tajay. Tajay was our council clerk. When Tajay applied for the job as the executive secretary, we did not pay Robert Half one dime. They wanted us to pay her, but she applied for that job on her own. Robert Half did not get her that job. I think. On her own, Robert half did not get her that job. I think it's. We shouldn't be paying Robert half nine thousand dollars for the executive secretary. Because like Mr. Herring and Ms. Farad said, we didn't retain them to get us a council clerk. And they are getting paid nine thousand dollars for something that they did not do. They got. And I'm telling you, I was the council president, so I know we didn't pay them. When she left and went with the administration. And on top of that, the administration and the council are two separate parts of the government, so they didn't. We shouldn't be paying Robert half to get. The council clerk because they did not, if they didn't find it for us, we shouldn't be paying them for it. And that's, that's information I know for fact.
Thank you, Ms. Maxine. As someone who's worked in. In consulting over the years, you know, that may have been a case in the past where if individual. Started tipping for one position but applied for another position that that was. Acceptable, but now consulting firms having lost very valuable assets. And been left with the, you know. You know, with the stick, so to speak, they have put in their contracts that if. You do contract with them to get a temporary, temporary employee and should that person become. A permanent employee that there is a conversion fee. That's the best standard contract language now with consulting businesses. If not, then people could do like they did in the past. You know, be staffed to one position and then apply to another and then leave the consulting firm. On the outs, so you know, consultant firms caught on to that. Discussing with their lawyers and that's in every standard consulting contract now. I will say to Mr. Herring, you know, Mr. Herring and Councilman Fareed's point that we could. Structure language a little bit because it's not actually eighteen percent. We were actually able to negotiate down to twelve percent, so the eighteen percent is not accurate. So we will change that as well as what. Councilman Herring and Councilman Fareed. Suggested, but that is standard language in today's contracts.
Okay, I still don't agree with it, but. If you have to do, because we had, we did hire two, we had the treasurer. And the city manager and we paid for them. Because they found those for us.
Yes, and that's just a loophole that they tightened up over the years.
Okay.
Now I saw. Councilwoman Smallwood's hand first. Ms. Smallwood, you're on mute, so we cannot hear you.
Here's my concern, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, here's my concern about this, this person. If this person was brought in for, is that, is that contract with Robert has for one year?
Well, I can't discuss the details of her contract.
You to give me the details. I just asked, was it a one year contract? Either yes or no.
What is your question, Ms. Smallwood?
My question is, instead of buying her out, why don't you contract her down to the council's office for one. For the remainder of her contract. And then you can hire her, hire her freely after her contract is, and because my concern is. Who is say she gonna stay there? With the, at the rate that the city of Glanardin is going. And who say they're gonna rein in a particular council person? So she will have a. A working environment that is respectable.
Thank you, Ms. Smallwood for your question. In addition to the loophole of that they closed, what I just discussed. They also closed that loophole as well. If a temporary employee is working for any company. And in this case, the city of Glanardin. We would have to disassociate with that person for a term of one year. And in some cases, it's longer before we can actually hire that person. So in Ms. Lewis's case. Even if we did have a contract with Robert half hypothetically for one year. At the end of that year, we would then have to wait an additional year to hire her. That's another loophole that they tightened up because what people were doing is just waiting the contract out. And did not pay the conversion fee. All consulting companies, I've worked for them. These loopholes were negotiated with their lawyers. They have closed it out so that you cannot try to jump through or try to finagle. If, if Robert half is finding temporary workers for companies, and in this case they did it for the city. Then they are making sure that they get compensated for finding it because we have had this job posting out for quite some time. We've had hundreds of applicants, most of which were not qualified. We've had people turn down this position because of. Several factors I won't get into and we have found, finally found one that is very. Thorough. She is excited. She's willing to put in the work to get to know more of Glanardin. Very detail oriented. I know Mayor Cross is sad to see her go and is actually trying to fight to keep her. Which is a testament to how good she is. So, thank you, Ms. Smallwood.
I have a follow up question. If my follow up question is, what are we gonna do? Are y'all gonna sign, have her to sign the contract that she need to stay with the city for one year? Before she leave because I can see her leaving the city and, and we're gonna be out ten thou, almost ten thousand dollars. What are you gonna do? What are you gonna do that gonna guarantee the city for not losing ten thousand dollars? So you gonna say, okay, we gonna buy you out of your contract, but you gotta sign the contract with the city that you're gonna be here for one year.
Thank you, Ms. Smallwood. There's no guarantees in, in the business of employment. This is, this, Ms. Smallwood, Ms. Smallwood, this is an inherent risk in any employment with anyone. Now, this person in, in accordance with, in accordance with all. The employees will be on a probationary period because it may be the council and in six months decide that, hey, well, maybe we should not. Ms. Price, could you please mute your phone, please? So, so. You know, that's all I can say on that matter, Ms. Smallwood, but I appreciate your, your questions and I think that I've answered them adequately.
Going down the wrong path, but that's all I have to say.
I accept that comment. I appreciate it and I thank you for it. Mr. Stevenson, I saw your hand next.
Mr. President, good evening. It's always great to see you, Madam Mayor and the rest of the city council members. Just have some good news, not as well or as good as I would have hoped for. But the Democratic Central Committee for District Twenty Four is allotting three hundred and fifty dollars to. Martin's caterers to use that money to pay for some of our seniors. I've already discussed it with our mayor earlier today, so just wanted to inform everyone of that update. We are very happy to do so. It, we weren't able to give more because as you all know, we cover a very broad range of municipalities and townships in the district. So we do have to be very aware of what we give out, but I'm happy to report back that news and happy to work with the city going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you so much.
And Ms. Smallwood, please mute yourself. Mr. Jesse Huff Junior, I saw your hand and you put it down. Did you have a question or a comment? Or anything related to legislation of the city?
I do got a question. I just wanna know, I noticed that the county has started improving the streets on seven oh four. So when is, do the city of Glanada have a plan and when it gonna start. Working on the city streets and the city sidewalks? And also with the chief of police, are y'all getting input from the citizens on this decision?
Okay, I'll take that. Well, I, the, the chief of police is something that will go through the, the mayor.
I can answer on that one. So for the chief of police, if I may, council president?
Sure, briefly.
Thank you. So chief of police is an HR action, so the job actually goes up and it's actually listed. If you will, on the city of Glanardin website, anyone can apply for it. The resumes will come in and then we'll form a hiring action board who will review them. And ask the, you know, baseline questions for the job and a selection will be made. So it is an open for application job, so anyone can apply. Thank you, council president.
Thank you. As for, I hear a very faint voice.
Can you hear me?
And what, if, if I could say one more thing?
Yeah, well, Ms. Ms. Wilson, one second, let Mr. Huff Junior finish, please.
This, just real quick to the council and to the mayor. Me as a citizen, I just think it's real important that y'all work together. And put all of the selfishness, the cattiness. If you don't like this person, put all that stuff aside because if y'all don't work together effectively, it affects our city. And we're trying to move forward and we're trying to do stuff and I just really think y'all need to, y'all need to really work together. You don't have to be all best friends, da, 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 but y'all really do need to work together so we can get the city back the way it need to be. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Huff Junior.
Can I just say one thing?
Ms., so. Yes, yes, Ms. Wilson, just give me one second. You are next. If you do have a question or a public comment or testimony, please raise your hand. If you do not have. Camera. Capabilities, there is a way that you can raise your hand and I can see you. That'll, that'll help out. Ms. Green, I actually, I can actually see you, but Ms. Wilson was first, so I will get back to you. In a second, okay? But if you can't find the, the virtual hand raised, that'll help me so I won't miss you. And we'll do it that way. If you have a camera, as Ms. Green does, I see her hand, so then I can. Be, take a mental note or write it down that she will be next or put her in a certain line, but. There are two pages of citizens, so it'll be difficult if I cannot. And the, and if you raise your virtual hand, it automatically moves you to my page, so thank you. Ms. Wilson.
Yes, I was unable to raise my hand. That's why I raised my voice.
No, 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 not, I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Let you know that I had a question because there are people who are on phones. Although I'm not on the phone, they don't have any place to raise their hands. They would have to raise their voices. I just wanna make that known. However, I'd like to go back to the conversation of. The council clerk because I don't think that that was finished. I appreciate the other comments that other people had. But we were on the topic of the council clerk, hiring a council clerk. And I agree with Ms. Pfeiffer, Ms. Smallwood, Mr. Herring and others who oppose paying almost ten thousand dollars. For a council clerk when you don't even really know that has, is she able to work with several, seven people at. You know, at the same time. Is she, I mean, is she able to accommodate seven council members, not just you. Mr. Curtis, but everyone else because you've had, we've had situations whereas. Persons have been, they have left because of council members personalities. Issues with council members and that's why you don't have a council clerk. It's my understanding that you had, you all had hired it or, or had a temporary, I don't know if it was temporary or permanent. Deputy clerk who was acting as the council clerk, she immediately left. So my whole thing is why would we pay out ten thousand dollars for someone who potentially. Would not stay because you had the same people on board that caused issues before. So I'm just saying that I don't think that it's wise for us to put that kind of money out like that. I am for giving, making her the temporary council clerk. And then at the end of her contract, then you'll know whether or not you want to. Want her to stay or close, or if it has to be close to the end, you'll know whether or not she wants to, she would be able to stay. She'd be able to accommodate the, the council members. So, you know, I, I think you really need to rethink things a little bit. Because of, you do have different dynamics going on.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. A couple of things and I'll go to you, Councilman Fareed as a response, cuz I know you have a response to this. I appreciate your, your questions and concern, Mrs. Wilson. I will note a couple of things or several things. One. Just going back to Ms. Smallwood, we actually paid for a former treasurer, Mr. Bratton. We paid not as much, but five thousand dollars. Without assurance that he would stay on, but he stayed on for quite some time. Two, this money does not go to Ms. Lewis. This goes to Robert half. And I don't think that, well, let me take that back. The, the piece that I think you're missing is that in any consulting agency, I will be frank, when I was with Deloitte. They were charging three hundred and thirty nine dollars an hour for me. I saw maybe thirty eight dollars of that. That's the same thing that we're doing now with Robert half. We're paying way more than what the salary would be. So if we do keep her for a year, will we pay in an excess of somewhere just. Maybe seventy thousand dollars for someone that is not even permanent when we could. Balance that and get that person on and pay the salary that we have allotted for. So we will be paying almost double of, of what. This position actually makes if we do stay in that contract and that, that was one of the decisions that was factored in. And that's, that's standard across all consulting agencies. When I was with Deloitte, when I was with other people, they, they always charged. And a greater amount because the company needs to get paid as well as the individual and you end up paying more. So sticking with this contract is more expensive for the city than just hiring Ms. Ms. Lewis.
I wasn't done.
Ms. Wilson, I know that you were done, but I think Councilwoman wants also.
No, I wa, I wasn't, I said I wasn't done. So my, my question to you is. Is this what, is this the case with this agency? I know you speak of your experience with other agencies, but is this the case with. The agency that, that we're dealing with, with Robert half?
Yes, ma'am, I also.
All of the council people have read the contract. And this, and this is a decision of every council person. Is that it?
Yeah.
Is that what you're telling me?
To answer your question, as it relates to Robert half, yes, I have been placed by Robert half. And I, I've seen the steps on my paychecks when I first started out. The, the price for Robert half is significantly higher than what I as the employee received. I was placed where I have two times in my career and the price that they have paid, well, I don't need to get into all that. But yes, that, that is the case of Robert half. I, I've worked with Robert half. They have placed me twice. And both times they have paid out an amount for me and both times while I worked, they have received double of what. They paid me to do the job at whatever place I was.
And based, and based upon what you're saying now, which I was not saying that the ten thousand dollars would go to. This young lady, I'm saying that her salary plus the ten thousand dollars, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, the salary plus the ten thousand dollars, that's what we're actually. You end up paying for that person.
Yes.
Okay, so that's why I was saying that I disagree that we should do that.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. Are you saying that we're going to pay the ten thousand plus the salary to the, to Robert half or?
No.
Okay, all right.
I didn't say that.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. I'm sorry.
No, that's not what I said.
Yeah, I understand that. Thank you.
I, I think that a lot of things need to be taken into. I, I think that a, a lot of things need to be taken into consideration in making that decision. Because, a, as you said, uh, as it was stated, it was put out there, she can be there for, uh, be, uh, be hired as the council clerk. But once she sees the, the, um, what she has to deal with, that's not to say she will stay there for any length of time. That's not, she could stay a week. She could stay a month and then be gone. And the city would be out of $10,000.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is not the case for all employees because we do not pay for all employee, we do not pay a fee to every employee that we have.
Correct.
Because they go through the process, the hiring process. And my question is, were there other people who were interviewed by the council? And the council found that they were not qualified? Because I would think that you would have, uh, with people being out of work right now, I would think that you would have quite a few qualified people that who would want to, want to work.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Wilson for your question. Actually, there were some, uh, people who were interested and unfortunately, due to the past history of the council and the infighting, they found that out and people that we wanted to bring in, uh, respectfully declined our offer to come in. Which is why we're trying to start off on a new foot with this council and this new mayor of work together, uh, as, uh, uh, Mr. Jesse Huff Jr. said. But unfortunately, due to past actions of council, of council members, this is not a highly, uh, 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 you know, sought after job because of the history of what has happened in the past. So to be transparent, that is why we have lost people. Uh, and I have made, um, you know, I'm very transparent in, in these interviews. Uh, and people are aware of that and they choose to, to go elsewhere. Uh, Ms. Lewis has actually looked at past, uh, council meetings uh, and saw the dysfunction and the arguing and the griping, and she still wants to take this job. So I commend her for be able to take on that challenge, to know the different personalities that she will have to deal with. Um, and to take on that challenge. So, uh, thank you, Ms. Wilson, for that. It has been, uh, uh, one second, Ms. Wilson. It has been very challenging for us to find somebody. Uh, but we, we have found it and council will review it tomorrow. They'll get a chance to interview tomorrow. If they don't like her, then they can choose to say no to, uh, Ms., Ms. Lewis. This is just an introduction, uh, and, and we'll get more involved tomorrow. Uh, and the vote will go on. We hear everybody's comments and, uh, I'm pretty sure every council member will take that into effect. Councilman Fareed?
You've articulated the point around the fact that we would actually be paying more. Um, the city would be paying more if we kept the contract through the year. And I think the other piece is, as my understanding of the contract, even if we waited until the end of the contract, we would still have to pay a conversion fee or wait an entire year. So it's not so much a matter of if we wait, we wouldn't have to pay that money. We would have to pay it at some point. And again, the total of what the conversion fee plus the salary that is already, um, budgeted for the council clerk is less than what we are paying to Robert Half for, um, that position as executive assistant. Or even if we were to hire another temp specifically for the council clerk, it would be more money than what we are proposing or what's being proposed.
Thank you, Councilman Fareed. And I assure all, and I'm coming to you, Ms. Green, I assure all of our residents, but we don't just pick somebody out of a hat and say, we're going to hire you. Everyone on the council is doing their due diligence. Mr. Herring, reading the, the, um, the resolution and not liking certain verbiage in there, raises his hand and speaks on it. Uh, Ms. Fareed, uh, you know, asking questions. Uh, Ms. Ferguson, everyone has the information. All the council members are doing their due diligence. And we'll also do our due diligence tomorrow when we interview her, uh, tomorrow. So we're, we're not just saying, oh, we, uh, just pick this person, let's move, move this person in. Every council member is doing their, their oath, is living up to their oath to make sure that we can set up a legislative office that can work for the people of, uh, Glen Arden and carry out what we need to do to move these priorities forward. Uh, and, and that's something that we need to do. Ms. Green? I'm sorry, you're on mute.
My question is, I haven't heard anything about, um, what we, um, it might be already on the table, what we're gonna do, um, for the chief. You know, he, he, you know, he's no longer with us and I thought that we're trying to find out, are we gonna have something on his behalf serving as chief of Glen Arden? I haven't heard anything. I would just wonder, we, we, I mean, was it gonna be anything in it, in, in the honor of him being a chief as long as he was? I wanted to know, was that gonna happen?
Well, I will say that we did prepare a proclamation for the chief. Uh, I know, um, council members went to the, uh, memorial service out in Owens, Maryland. Um, and we did, did do a proclamation for him. And, uh, I know, uh, Mayor Cross, I believe, has some other ideas. Now, uh, Cross, briefly, if you can, I'm sorry, not Cross. Mayor Cross, if you could briefly touch on those ideas.
Uh, so, and, and I know, uh, Acting Chief Jackson is on the line as well, so please feel free to pipe in, sir. Uh, but we have, you know, made sure that we have taken care of the chief. We will, we have sent over his badge at the request of First Lady and, uh, Ms. O'Donnell. And we did as well go out to Owens Ma- Maryland and, uh, brief, uh, speak on behalf and over, uh, chief and, and, and paid our respects, uh, as a city. And we are going to, uh, have a memorial. We have asked, uh, Ms. O'Donnell when she is ready. So it will be on the family's time. So at this time, as they are going through obviously their moment of grief, they still haven't buried our dear beloved chief yet, so he will be interned at Arlington Cemetery. And I'll say for all that didn't know, we had a three-time Purple Heart awardee from Vietnam working for us. So we, we will do this on the family's time. And we do want to put up a plaque in his honor. And we will work with the Historical Society for other, uh, uh, opportunities to grant us the service. Uh, Captain Jackson, uh, anything else to add, sir?
Yes, uh, good evening, everyone. I was just, um, waiting to meet with you mayor across so we can get together on the language because I was trying to push it back to him, where we could present it to the family at some particular time.
Yes, we'll definitely do that. But I believe, uh, Ms. Green is talking about for the city to come out a, a, at the go room. But definitely we will do that on the family's time, Ms. Green, and we'll make sure that we put it out in all of our communication channels. Right now, lots online, but this one would definitely be a postcard. Uh, flyer on the door. We'll make sure no citizen misses it. Thank you for asking that question, though.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Ms. Maxine? If you're speaking.
Let me get unmuted. The, yeah, let me get unmuted.
Yes, we hear you now.
Two comments.
Mm-hmm.
And my first comment was about what Mr. Huff said.
Mm-hmm.
About the council and, and all of this stuff. I'm gonna ask the citizens to give you all a chance. Give you a chance because the meetings, as far as I know, it's only been one or two since you've been elected. And they've been orderly, you know, good meetings. And I just pray that you all don't have to live on the reputation of past councils. You know, you know what I'm trying to say? I'm just asking them to give you all a chance. Because there's no, I, I, I haven't detected anything that was, you know, just out of order or anything with the meetings. But I do want to say one thing, and he asked about the citizens having input for the chief. Absolutely not. That's the mayor and the council's decision. The mayor will, she said she's having to, um, you know, people put their applications and stuff in for the chief. And she can make a, she can make a, a recommendation to the council. That's what I want to say. She can only make a recommendation to the council. The council has to approve the chief. So that's, that's, that's my last comment. I just wanted to make sure that you all know too that she doesn't pick the chief. You all vote for the chief. And every other administrative person, you all vote for your council clerk because it's your council clerk. But for the city manager, the treasurer, the chief, all of those, even though they administrative positions, they have to be verified by the, they have to be voted on by the council.
Thank you, Ms. Maxine.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Jesse Huff Jr.
Uh, just to piggyback, uh, Councilman Pfeiffer, uh, I wasn't saying like it was like no confusion or anything with the meetings. I'm just, uh, speaking in general overall, even what we don't see on the meetings, what's going on behind the scenes. I'm just saying that everyone needs to be supporting everyone so we can move forward. Because there's a lot of stuff that go on behind the scenes that all the citizens is not aware of. And I just feel like for, for the city to move forward, our government, these are the people who we are, we elected. I feel that y'all should have some kind of unity, some kind of understanding to put your personal differences aside and do what's best for the city. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Jesse Huff Jr. And I can assure you that, um, uh, for the council, uh, our time has been, it's been great. Everybody has chipped in, everybody is working together. We may have our disagreements, uh, but we talked through them. Um, you know, no one heard me yelling at Mr. Herring because, uh, this, I, I mean, I disagree with the language, but, uh, but it's not something that is big enough to, you know, to even argue over. Um, you know, he has a point, Mr., uh, Councilwoman Fareed has a point. And my job as council president is to make sure these meetings are conducted in a very professional way. Uh, that where we convene as a council, that everyone is respectful. And it has been that way, even through disagreements. Uh, we've had ver, a couple of successful events thus far, and we have a lot of work to do. Uh, and everybody on the, on the council. Uh, yeah, Councilman Gilliam, Councilman Fareed, Councilman Harrison, Councilman Herring, Councilwoman Jones, uh, Councilman Ferguson, myself, we're all committed to upholding our oath and serving the citizens first, putting the citizens first and, and working to make Glen Arden, uh, a, a better place. And working along with, uh, Mayor Cross from the administrative side to make sure that, um, all the things that we legislate, that they're carrying out on the administrative side. So, um, you know, I, I know Mayor Cross just was sworn in, but she, she's now on and uh, we're going to continue to, to push forward in, in unity and together, uh, and discuss out disagreements professionally and come to resolution. Uh, council, uh, Ms. Smallwood, I saw your hand, but it's been up for a while from your last question. I don't know if you have another question or you just didn't put your hand down.
No, I don't have another question at this time.
Thank you. Uh, we have another 15 minutes. This is, you know, open to the public, uh, to, for you guys to speak on legislation. Um, you know, any questions that you have of, of us, any particular, um, council members? Uh, this is, this is your time. So, uh, Mrs. Price?
Yes, I was wondering if at all possible, maybe if we could do a parade for the passing, um, chief. He was such a great man. Um, he impacted everybody in the neighborhood. And I just thought that would have been a great way to, when it's time to commemorate his, him, his memory.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Price, uh, Mayor Cross and Captain Jackson. I hope you guys add that to your, your list of ideas of what we can do, uh, for the late Chief, uh, O'Donnell. Next hand I saw was uh, Mr. Jesse Huff Jr. First, let me, um, answer your question. Councilwoman Fareed answered it in the chat as it relates to, uh, why we aren't meeting in person. Um, we will get there. There are several steps that need to happen before we get there. Uh, one, we want to make sure we have proper COVID protocols in, in place, uh, with the numbers rising in the county and across the US. Want to make sure we protect not only the council, but our citizens who come to these meetings. Two, uh, we are actively working on, uh, uh, restoring the, the cable. Uh, so we're getting that up and so, and seeing how we can have the cable, uh, Zoom and in-person at the same time. So we can be, uh, you know, if you want to join Zoom, you can. If you want to join in person, you can. If you want to join on a cable station, you can. So, uh, that was a question you had in the chat, but I see your hand if you have another question. Mr. Jesse, Mr. Jesse Huff, Ms., Ms. Smallwood, one second. Uh, Mr. Jesse Huff Jr.
It's not really a question. This is more so of a concern. I know I mentioned this to, uh, you before, Mr. Curtis and to the mayor. But the public works where they don't work in Ward 1. It's like they're not doing their job in Ward 1. And when they do do their job, it's the only time is when the supervisor is out there with them. When he out there in Ward 1 with them, that's when I actually see them working. But other day come, like, they come, they just sit in the truck. They're not picking up trash. They sit there for like 20 minutes, pull off. The grass is not being cut properly, like, was, that's another concern that I, I have too.
Thank you, Mr. Jesse Huff Jr. Uh, Mayor Cross, can you please look into that and, uh, maybe update? Uh, I know you have, uh, uh, Mr. Huff Jr.'s email. Uh, update on some type of schedule that possibly public works can come out or, or out in, uh, Ward 1 and should be working in Ward 1. Uh, that'll be, I think, helpful to him, um, in.
Well, mm-hmm, if I may, Council President? So the goal, yes, the goal is to update the schedule and make that schedule available to all citizens. Now, with that schedule, it's gonna be a digital schedule, so it'll be online. But, uh, we will do that, uh, really expeditiously. Thank you for that. And I have been out to, uh, Mr. Huff's, uh, establishment and have seen the concerns. And I do echo the need for us to, uh, rat, ratify some of those issues. But definitely the schedule is, is going to be crafted, Mr. Huff, and we'll definitely put it on the Glen Arden page. And we've also incorporated into the new website as well.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Cross. Uh, Councilman Fareed, I saw your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to expand on the topic of, um, our return because I've been receiving calls and emails from a nu, number of citizens, you know, saying that the building is open, why aren't we back in session? Um, I think you've pointed out that we want to be safe and I think it's important for the citizens to understand that there's an actual difference between the setup, um, of the administrative office and the council chambers. In the administrative office, they have protections such as plexi, plexiglass. They have, um, separate office spaces. So there's, uh, it's more conducive to a safe, separated environment. So I think that the citizens, I want to make sure the citizens understand that this is not just a matter of us not wanting to come back, but more so being very diligent in making sure that the appropriate precautions are in place before, um, we return and making sure that that council chamber is, um, is, is safe for everyone, both the citizens and the council.
Yes, and, you know, uh, so council members know where I stand on this. If I could be back, I would have been back last month. Um, you know, I'm eager to get back as well, but, you know, we have to do it, uh, the right way. Um, because the health of my fellow council members and the health of my fellow citizens are, are priority. Uh, and not my rush, uh, to get everybody back to the council. I meant to the, to chambers. Uh, so that, that is first and foremost. Thank you, Councilman Fareed. I saw council, I, I saw Ms. Smallwood's hand. And again, I don't know if it's still up or you put it down and put it up.
It's up because I have a question.
Okay.
My question is, uh, what type of arrangements have y'all made for Piedmont Avenue for Artmore Family Friends Day?
Artmore, I'm sorry, say that again?
Artmore Glen Arden Family and Friends Day for September the twenty-fifth. What type of arrangements, uh, have y'all set up, uh, for parking over here? Because the citizens over here should be able to move in and out of the street at a reasonable rate without having been blocked in or can't get in.
Thank you.
I can, I can answer that.
Uh, o- o- one, one second, uh, Mr. Jesse Huff Jr., and then you can, because I know you are chairman on the planning committee, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So, Ms. Smallwood, this is not a, um, a, a city-sponsored event. So, uh, you know, we currently, we do, currently, we do not have in any setup, uh, for a, an event that we aren't, um.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. and Mr..
Okay, I mean, go ahead.
The question is, what have y'all, what are y'all putting in place so the residents over here on Piedmont Avenue will be able to move freely on their street?
May I comment on that?
Sure, Captain Jack, uh, Acting Chief Jackson, sorry.
Yes, Ms. Smallwood, I'm gonna get with, uh, Howard, uh, the, tomorrow and Thursday. We're gonna make up, uh, no parking signs, and we're gonna post them up along Church and Piedmont Avenue. And also, on the day of the event, I'm gonna have officers posted up at the intersections at Piedmont and Church. Church and James Fletcher Church and Oak Street. So the, um, the people that's attending will not block those intersections. So when, when traffic come up to the stop signs, they will, they'll be able to see traffic and turn and exit, exit onto the next roadway to, uh, continue on to where they want to go. So if they're gonna park, they're gonna have, uh, either park down by the school or even on the parking lot of, uh, A-one Liquors. But they will not be able to park along Church Street or Piedmont Avenue, in front of the, uh, rec center. And they probably use the parking lot of the rec center. I don't know how that's gonna be, uh, if they're gonna, uh, court, they're gonna block that off or not. I don't, I don't know of any setups right now, how they, how they gonna set up or what entertainment is gonna be on the, uh, grass in the area. But there will be no parking along, uh, Piedmont Avenue on the, on, on the recreation side and Church Street on the, uh, grass area on both sides by, um, the park and behind, uh, A-one Liquors. And I have, I have instructed my officers that we're gonna strictly enforce parking, no parking signs as well.
Thank you, Chief.
Uh, uh, Mr. Jesse Huff Jr., do you have anything to add?
Uh, the, the chief actually said what I was gonna say.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Yeah, yes.
It's me again.
Yes, and, and I, um, uh, look forward to talking to you after this meeting as too, Ms. Wilson, just give me a heads up.
Give me a call. You got my number, right?
Yep.
Okay, okay. So, um, I just wanted to ask, since this is not a, uh, a city-sponsored event, what resources from the city will be utilized? Which of Glen Ar- what Glen Arden resources will be used by?
Nothing from the city will be used, nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
And just one other comment, I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, yeah, we have five, five minutes. This, this is for you.
But I just wanted to say, I, I understand what Mr. Huff said. Uh, but everybody doesn't think the same way. Everybody doesn't have the same views. So it's, uh, as you said earlier, it's okay to agree to disagree. But I think it's also important that citizens give their opinions on things that, that, uh, come before the city.
Absolutely. And, and that's why we have these meetings, so you can voice your opinions. And, uh, you know, that can, you know, uh, affect how we vote on res- on, uh, resolutions and legislation. So all of the comments and even what, whether I agree or disagree, all of your comments and your opinions matter. Um, so we appreciate it.
Okay, you know, I'm gonna hang around.
Yeah, I, 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 I expect, I haven't seen you in a while, so that's why I was gonna call you, but, okay.
I know, yeah, give me a call.
All right.
I'll be up.
Okay.
All right.
All right, I, I think we did good. The, uh.
My name is up again.
All right, if you can wrap it up in, within a couple of minutes, we're good to go. Uh, you're on mute, though, so we can't hear you.
I would just want the citizens to know that the cable is up and working tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Smallwood.
That's for updates and announcements. Not for the meetings. Is that right, Ms. Smallwood?
I don't know whether or not you heard, because somebody muted me.
No, you're, you're fine. We heard it. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smallwood.
Okay.
All right, I would like to thank everyone for attending tonight. I think that that was a productive meeting, you know, touched on several topics. Um, Ms. Smallwood, please mute yourself. Um, and, you know, we, we've heard all your comments and we appreciate all your comments. Um, are we good to go? Any, uh, last comments, uh, Councilman Harry?
Nope.
Uh, Councilman Hairston?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Councilwoman Fareed?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, I have one thing that I'm sit- I was sitting here reading this, uh, resolution and looking again at line thirty-seven, and it, it reads, whereas the firm Robert Half was retained to assist in identifying temporary services with the understanding. And, and it goes on to say the, uh, how we have, when we take a regular employee out of there since. Uh, so I don't understand where the, the wording is saying that the council retained or it, we did, the city retained Robert Half to do this service for us, but it, it doesn't say in here.
And, 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 thank you, Councilwoman Jones. I, I read it the same way you do, but in, in the essence of time, we have a closed meeting tomorrow. We could talk about the, the verbiage, uh, in, in that meeting, uh, to make the necessary adjustments or, or, or not. But I understand where you're coming from.
Okay, but I have one other comment that I wanted to make. I saw in the chat where Mr. Huff said that I, uh, pushed, uh, took him out of the meeting. There's two steps in taking somebody out of a meeting. I, I'm sorry, sir, that you were taken out of the meeting, but I did not remove you from the meeting tonight. So, but please accept my sincerest apologies.
I was talking about how you just threw my name out there.
I threw your name out, uh, uh, no, I would, I, I asked you to. Oh, no, I was just asking you to come because you knew about a certain issue. That's why I asked, would you, you, I, I was sure that you knew about the, uh, time that they had football practice. That was, I was only asking for clarification from you. I wasn't throwing your name out in a derogatory way. I was just trying to get you to help me as a citizen, be able to give the information to the officer and to the citizens, uh, what we were looking for. Please forgive me if, if I, uh, if I, if that offended you in any way. Please forgive me. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. And, uh, please update your name, uh, because you have my name on you.
Uh, yeah, we're gonna update, uh, we finally got the mayor taken care of. Now we're gonna get you taken care of. And then you can have control of the meetings.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
And I'm good. I do want to say that, um, the thing that citizens, um, I think this was a very productive, uh, meeting. And I really enjoyed the fact that everybody spoke out and, and really, um, voiced their opinion. I, I like that. So continue to do that. And thank you for that.
Thank you. In the essence of time, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, guys, for coming out, uh, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Good job, good job.
Hi, Angela.
Hey, how are you?
I'm good.
Good night.
Good night. Good night, Ms. Wilson.
Keep watching that television.
Hi, Ms. Ferguson.
Hey, hi, Ms. Green. Good night.
Good night.